Good evening. Today is Monday, November 14, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. We have a motion to open the meeting. Laura, second Lori, all in favor? All right, great. We're just going to convene into executive session to discuss some legal and personnel matters, and then we'll back out at 7:30 for our public portion of the meeting. I have a motion to enter into executive session. Lori, second Cynthia, all in favor? All right, great. Thank you. All right, good evening again. Today is Monday, November 14, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. We already opened the meeting at 6:30 for executive session. We just came out of executive session. Sorry for being a few minutes late. So we'll just pick it up. The meeting is already open, and our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance. Oh, yeah. Pledge allegiance. All right, we'll start off with the board comments. Anyone has any? I'll start to my left. Laura, you have any comments?
Good evening. Welcome, everyone. I don't have too many comments other than to say congratulations to the seniors today, who are nice and senior, very impressive, and such a wonderful thing to see, and so proud of the senior class and some of their recent accomplishments with college. So a shout out to them and to our football team. We won the championship.
Section?
And we go on to the sections. Yep, championships. And then we go on to the sections. So congrats to the football team and all the other teams. I think cross-country, right?
Cross-country, cross-country track.
Yeah. They did very well also. So congrats to all the athletes, and I will pass it along.
All right, great. We'll jump back over to Lori.
She said everything I was going to say.
Yeah, I was going to say. Usually when you go with the end, there's not much to say, but you echo all the comments already made.
Yeah, great, yeah. Same thing here. The only thing I wanted to add on my end too, I wanted to give a little shout out to Dr. Goodman for, I don't know if any of you guys have been catching the happenings emails that she's been sending out since starting this year. I just want to commend you on those because those are amazing. Those are really well done. Really good snapshot of what's going on in the district. A lot of great pictures and images and things of that nature. So I really enjoy them. So I just want to shout you out for that and just encourage everyone to look out for that. I know everybody gets inundated with emails. We're all email overloaded. But when you see the happenings, I recommend you click on it. It's pretty good stuff. Okay, that's all I had in addition to the sports stuff that you already mentioned. So I'll kick it over to you, Dr. Goodman, for any comments you may have.
Okay, well, I'm going to do the student liaison because we're very fortunate. We have two great students here tonight. First of all, Catherine Galindo. Catherine is currently a senior taking the competitive schedule of courses. Catherine is an integral part of our school community. She is well-liked by all, a natural leader, who others look up to. Catherine is the vice president of Jazz Co. and captain of the girls varsity cross-country team. Catherine is looking forward to pursuing a degree in either architecture or interior design as she moves forward with her post-secondary education. Catherine is a member of strings. She's a really talented musician. She plays multiple instruments. Like, I think she told me that she just decided to play the viola this year. She just picked it up. She loves playing the violin. Okay? But now she's a viola player, and she enjoys it. And in her free time, she also enjoys playing the guitar. Catherine?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Galindo, and today I will be giving you a school update on the Tuckahoe and middle and high school. So for starters, recently, our Tuckahoe Learning Center was opened. It is available on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays each week from 3:30 to 4:30 in the Tuckahoe Public Library. This allows students who desire to study outside of their homes to study in a more quiet and relaxing environment in the Tuckahoe Public Library. Last week, when we had off on Election Day, our 11th graders decided to take advantage of the day off and take a practice SAT as part of our free Jumpstart tutoring program. This will allow our juniors to prepare for their college applications in the future with taking ACT and SATs and getting free tutoring from Jumpstart. Another thing I'd like to add is that we have our high school picture retakes on November 17. Same thing for middle school. They have their retakes on December 1. This will allow students who were not able to take their pictures on the day it was scheduled, or for students who would like to take their retakes if they did not like their pictures, to take that opportunity to take their pictures again. Our senior National Honor Society hosted recently a Thanksgiving food drive for Ecap where they were able to donate food items such as stuffing, mashed potatoes, gravy, cranberry sauce, and muffin mix. This will allow our community, who are not financially able to purchase these items, to have a nice Thanksgiving and have food. Another thing that happened was the senior haunted house and our seniors ragamuffin parade during our Halloween weekend. And on behalf of me and like all of the other seniors, we were very grateful and proud to see how the community and how it all turned out. We were all so grateful, and we had lots of fun. Another thing I'd like to add on is that on Thursday, November 17, a volunteer in New York will be visiting our middle and high school to discuss the importance of volunteerism and opportunities available to help our community. This will allow students who have never thought of volunteering to take a chance. And finally, our first-ever eighth-grade sky watch was held on November 2 on the Tuckahoe turf field. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Great job. Very informative. Thank you, Kathy. Michael Enziata is our next student representative. He's currently a senior at Tuckahoe High School, and it's easy to see how well-liked Michael is, both by peers and staff. Michael was just voted recently homecoming king, and he's a great representation of an all-around exceptional student. Michael is looking to pursue his degree in business as he moves forward in post-secondary setting and is currently looking at a variety of schools to attend. He has won the honor of being All-Section and Section Team All-State. He's the captain of the football team who just clinched the Section 1 Class D Championship. In addition to his athletics, Michael is a talented singer who recently was one of five elite singers from Tuckahoe School District who was chosen for the area All-State testing room. Michael?
Thank you so much. That was very kind. I really appreciate that. Thank you for having me, by the way. Really appreciate it. I'm here for the athletic update. It's been a really exciting year. The fall has been amazing, and our sports have been dominating. So really excited to give this update. Our homecoming interview, it was really an awesome experience. I mean, I think you can ask anyone across the board, being in person, being in the gym again. If you've attended a pep rally, being outside last year was a little bit, you know. You know, it was what it was, but this year it was just back. Everyone was so excited. The parade was amazing. The court was really excited. It was a great group of people. It was a lot of fun. The seniors were pumped up. It was great. The bonfire was back this year. I was talking to the janitors while the process was going on, and they were really doing everything they could to get it in the parking lot, you know, bringing the fire department, everything. And they really did a great job. And, you know, we were warming up. The football team was. So I didn't experience the bonfire, but I've heard it was amazing, and I think there was like a drum set going on. It was everything. It was amazing. The media day. I think that, you know, everyone sees the media day on social media, like for, you know, big schools like Oregon, Tennessee, like, you know, big football schools. And, you know, we really hope like, you know, let me pose with my friends. Let me have some fun like that. And we were able to do that this year, and it was a lot of fun. You know, having like cool props, like glasses and stuff. It was great. The Tuckahoe Day event. A lot of the younger kids can't participate in the stuff that we do. And I remember when I was in, you know, fifth grade, sixth grade, I was like, look at these guys. You know, they're doing all these great things. You know, why can't we have anything? You know? And we really gave that experience to them. Running the games for them and like playing the games with them was really awesome. It was like a great, it was a full circle, you know? Being a senior, playing with like fifth graders. It was great. And then the games went really well. I mean, unfortunately, you know, we went 1-2 for the weekend. The boys and the girls soccer lost, but the boys won. And I think that the crowd was packed every night. We had three night games, which is a great experience. And it was a lot of fun. Being in the crowd, being on the field, you know, both ways, it was really incredible. And I'm just, you know, beyond grateful to have, you know, a normal senior year like that. It was awesome. And then our varsity girls soccer team played in the section championship on Saturday, October 29. Unfortunately, they lost to Haldane 3-1, but they really played very hard that game, and they've had a great season all year. A lot of great players across the board, and a great senior class is, you know, graduating from that team. But it was a great year for them. Our varsity volleyball team was also named league champions and earned the number-five spot in the playoffs. They went to Pauling to compete for the playoffs. Unfortunately, they lost 3-0 last week, but they played really hard, and they had a great season. Our varsity cross-country team. Let's go, Kathy. The girls, I think, all qualified for the state round, and they had a lot of fun. Owen Gjerson, I believe, is how you pronounce it. He qualified for the state round, and they played really hard. They ran really hard. They went up Friday night, and they came, oh, Friday morning, and came back Saturday night. They were really excited, very proud to have experienced that. You know, going to state's a big deal. I mean, being a football player, that's like my dream. So really, props to you guys. That's amazing. Our varsity football team completed an undefeated regular season, and we played Haldane this past weekend. We won 47-20. I think a lot of guys got in, which is great. You know, being a freshman, being a sophomore, getting into a section championship game is really something that, it's really cool. I mean, I wasn't able to do that, and, you know, a lot of people do that, and it's exciting. You know, the younger kids who play on the sidelines during practice, during the games, to play in a sectional championship, that's a pretty big deal, and, you know, hats off to them. And, you know, the most exciting news, I feel like for this athletic update, is the winter sports are here. Varsity and JV winter sports begin today, Monday, November 14. Modified winter sports begin on November 28. That is also a Monday. And we are excited for the addition of JV girls basketball and modified cheerleading to our winter sports offerings. I believe we have two new head coaches for the varsity cheer team, which is really exciting. They're going down to Florida in February. Hopefully, they can get the Worlds, the Nationals. Like, that's really exciting. And go cheer! And our pioneer team kicked off the season versus Sleepy Hollow this past Thursday. So it's going to be a lot of fun this winter. And, you know, go Tigers! Thank you very much for having me. Appreciate it.
Great job.
Excellent job, guys. You guys are really good. Both you guys are really good.
You guys kicked out. Did your homework? You did a great job.
Yeah, homework, homework, homework. Great job, guys.
Great job.
Hi, thank you so much. Hurry!
Okay. Okay, that's later. Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the superintendent's report. There were a number of celebrations and milestones since our last meeting. This past weekend, we recognize and honored our nation's veterans. This parallel recognition, conversation, and lesson in all three buildings. Also, our jazz band played in Tuckahoe, where they were also honoring veterans. And to the veterans in our community and our staff and in our families, I say thank you. Among the many events of the past few weeks, I would like to highlight a ribbon-cutting ceremony on the coddle field. Thank you to all who attended this great celebration, and special thanks to Tuckahoe Middle School, Tuckahoe High School marching band, the Tiger mascots, Tuckahoe High School vocal cast, varsity cheer team, our cheering cubs, of course, and our parents and community members. We welcomed a lot of distinguished guests who joined us, and I thank Mr. Pete Cassens, who are also famous since we started. It was quite inspiring. We thank our community again for this full support for this project. And I suggest that I think in the Tuckahoe Happenings, and on Facebook, you can go and click on and see our aerial view of our field. It's really beautiful. The board, the facilities meeting, sought to create this space on behalf of the school and the entire community, and we know that it will be used for many, many decades to come. At our superintendent's conference day, many topics were covered, including school safety, social learning, reading instruction, and differentiation. In my keynote address, I spoke about growth mindset of an organization, and that's what we have here in Tuckahoe. We always are trying to strive to do things better, and I thank the faculty and staff for us all working together for the betterment of our students. As you know, our partnerships with local law enforcement are very important to us, and the administrative team was trained by Chief Joseph Rodriguez on how to respond to an active shooter event. And they also, each of the police on our superintendent's conference days led training for all our staff, Lieutenant Rosenberg and SRO Officer Mignolet, on what to do in an active shooting or any kind of active event that could bring tragedy. And of course, what happened today really reminds us of the importance that we stay on our toes. Like, you know, doubtful that anything like this would ever happen here, but I want you to rest assured that all our teachers and staff have been trained on what to do if God forbid there is some situation like that. I thank the Eschessa Police Department. They told me also how quickly they could be here in under a minute. But we also have Officer Mignolet, who's a very fast runner, he told me, and he could be like right in the building also. So we're very fortunate to have, to be working with such a great police department. Recently, our middle schoolers enjoyed a thrilling field trip to Boundless Adventure. Thank you to Ms. Benedetti for her hand, her hard work and her firsthand organizing with the spirit gym. Students took risks and worked together, further cementing their teamwork and sense of community. On Halloween, students came out dressed in Halloween finest. We had superheroes, royalty, and goblins we're all seeing all around campus. Our teachers demonstrated their creativity and spirit as they went with our students in the ragamuffin parade as the community came together to cheer them on. And even our littlest trick-or-treaters, we invited our UPK students, and they also were at our ragamuffin parade. And this was led by our high school seniors. Just going back to superintendent's conference day, I just want the community to know we also train our UPK teachers on those days, and we have bought them curriculum and continue to have meetings with them and train them so that we know that the transition to coddle will be smooth for them. They are working on foundations. And with the kindergarten, we will be working on foundations there. So they will have this really head start on what we're doing, and we're very excited about that. Another exciting event, which Michael touched on, and so did the board, was our football game. We were really, really excited that Tuckahoe Tigers posted to the Class D title. And we thank our wonderful coaches, very talented players. The kids were like amazing and supportive community. You guys were all out there. And we hope that everybody comes to cheer them on Friday at Arlington High School. It really means a lot to them. Another exciting event that also took place for our community was that at the football turf field, we got the experience to peer at the stars and the planets. Thank you to the PTA for the generous donation of a professional-laid telescope. And thank you to Dr. G for sharing his expertise. That was a great night, and we thank everybody who was involved. Meanwhile, our high school jazz band, again, I told you about that, played music for the opening of the Tuckahoe Hero Next Door. And we were very, I've gotten a lot of emails about how great that they did. In our upcoming workshops, we will dive into the first two pillars of our strategic plan. So our workshops really are going clear. Our board of ed workshops will be on where we are going with our strategic plan. We will spotlight our work around SEL, our student assemblies, college preparation initiatives. It's early in the year, but our next workshop will provide a status update on all our work on the first two pillars, and we hope that everybody tunes in. Over the next few weeks, over the last few weeks, we celebrated Dr. Chris Keough's final oral defense of his dissertation, and he is now a doctor. So we wish him all good luck, his commitment to lifelong learning. I see it every single day, and I see how much his rigorous study for his documents has helped us with our curriculum across our district. We're so proud of him, and we know that what he learns, he will impart on us. I also want to take the opportunity to acknowledge that tonight, we will be voting on Dr. Bart Linehan's announcement of his upcoming retirement. We voted he's designing into retirement, and we're very happy for him. While we have many months to celebrate his contribution and map out his legacy, I invite you to congratulate him for his years of service for the Tuckahoe School. You will see him next week at the workshop, so you can congratulate him there. Our next meeting will take place after our Thanksgiving holiday recess. I wish our community a happy holiday with an opportunity to reconnect and recharge. I am thankful for the way our district is leading the way. It takes the teachers, the administration, the board, the families, the community, and the kids. And I'm so proud of them, and I hope everyone has an opportunity to reflect on what makes them grateful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Great update. Before we move on, I wanted to call a little bit of an alibi on the board comments. I meant to actually ask about updates with regards to committees. I know we wanted to start doing that, particularly the facilities committees. I know that's a very important one right now in terms of trying to get back on track with making up some of the work that wasn't done in the first bond. I wasn't able to make the last facilities committee meeting, so. Laura, would you mind giving a little update? I hate to put you on the spot. Just where we are now with that?
So yes, so the facilities committee did meet this past week and made great progress in terms of working on what is left to be done. That's our first priority as a committee, is to finish what the original bond had put on, which was the coddle cafeteria. And so there's a little redesign that was done because the bid came in so high, if everyone can remember, which is why we did not finish. But we do have that money allocated. So that was part of the meeting. We are going to move ahead with sending to SEB, which is the state, to amend that original project so that we can move that forward quickly. So that was, that hopefully will be done by November. So that timeline will come into play by the end of the year, November, by December, rather, sorry. The next scope, I guess, that we're looking at is now moving forward with other things that are not part of the original bond, but also things that need to get done structural-wise. So we talked about sort of three columns and things that the building need as a priority. That's whether it's infrastructure, roof, and things like that. So the committee was sent a very detailed sort of list of things in the building that need to get updated. Part of it's HVAC and things like that. So we are going to work on that and get back to the committee in two weeks, and we're going to discuss those two columns. So we're discussing another bond, you know, going out to the community for those items, which we will talk more in detail about.
Right.
But we're still discussing that. Our first priority is finishing, of course, the cafeteria and some of the other items that were left on.
So we're hoping as a committee for that next meeting to sort of come to a consensus on what we want to put forward in the bond.
Right, and the cafeteria and the library right now are on for a December, early January finish. So we did get that update from KGND. And so we're just working on now moving forward. There are many, many items, but I don't want to get into the details of it.
Yeah, no, no.
But we are going to work on moving forward with another bond, hopefully, for those items.
Just more so want everybody to know that we're working on it. I know that, obviously, we have a big piece of that original project that was not done, which is the coddle cafeteria. So just want everybody to know that we've been working on this since the beginning of the year with the idea of if we do need to go back out, which it sounds like we do, we definitely do. We want to get that going We want to get that going as early in the year as possible so that that funding can be available for the summer to get most of the heavy work done.
Right, and ideally it's to get the cafeteria started, to get going in the summer.
Right, exactly. And I did learn, I think it would come out of the last meeting that I missed, right? Was we did learn that the 1.6 million or so left over from the original bond can already be allocated towards that work in the summer, right? We don't have to wait necessarily for the bond to kick in.
Right.
But yeah, so good stuff there. There is a lot of critical infrastructure needs in the school that isn't as sexy, exciting, because it's not, you know, the stuff that you'll see, but it's really, really important stuff that could have a big cost savings to the school over time. So more to come on that. So with that, any other committee updates? You guys have any other?
Oh, the finance committee did need help.
Yeah.
I can give a quick update. We met and basically Faith is going to do a five-year plan for the district, which is great. And she's going to present that to the committee, I believe, maybe early December. And it's something for the district to sort of use not only for bonds and plans with the updates to the buildings, but then also curriculum and things that we want to plan ahead for. So she's been doing a great job with that and really setting the district on a course where we can plan ahead for potential ups and downs with budgets. So that's coming up. That's pretty much what we talked about the last meeting.
Great. Awesome. I did notice we had a little note here about having a discussion about the AV equipment, but maybe we should do that when Faith is here, right?
For the live, right?
Yeah. So yeah, we'll wait for Faith to be present for that conversation, right?
Okay.
All right, so then we'll move right along then. This brings us to our first recognition of the audience for... Oh, the National Schools, I'm sorry. We jumped over that. We just went through your comments. Okay. I'm sorry, let me back up. We actually have superintendent's introduction and national merit scholarship commended students.
Yes, so we're very excited because we have two students this year, Yuri Lee and Daryl Connolly, Ortaco High School seniors, who have been named commended students in the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. These students are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise demonstrated by their outstanding performance on the qualifying test used for this early entry. Students entered the National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2021 preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test last October. In April, the organization identifies 50,000 of the highest scorers in the country. We have an enormous amount of respect for both of them in reaching this milestone, and Tuckahoe is proud of their accomplishments. They are Yuri Lee. Yuri Lee has been named a commended student. Yuri is a senior who maintains a good balance between academics at Tuckahoe High School, athletics in the girls varsity soccer team, and her passion for music at the Juilliard School Pre-College Program. She strives to create a welcoming environment for fellow students to be successful in. She has taken nine AP courses over her high school career and scored a 35 on the ACT, which is pretty amazing. With these accomplishments, she hopes to study music at the Juilliard School. Outside the classroom, she is an award-winning composer, a violinist. She has been concert master in the Tuckahoe Stringed Orchestra since the seventh grade and participates in the chords in the band. As a composer, she has been recognized for prestigious organizations, including ASCAP, National Young Arts, Luna Composition Lab, and the Juilliard School Pre-College Program. You'll be hearing from her in a minute. So I see her back there. Daryl Connolly is another amazing student that has been named a commended student in the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program. Jerry is a senior who participates in many school clubs, including Science Olympiad, Quiz Bowl, Chess Club, Investment Club, and many more. He has taken eight AP classes over his high school career and scored a 1510 on the SAT. He is a member of the National Honor Society of Volunteers with the music around this project. He's a violinist, participates in the Manns College of Music Pre-College Program, and is a member of the Westchester Youth Symphony in addition to Tuckahoe's music program. He was a national finalist in the National History V in 2020 and 2022. He plans to study the violin performance in college. And they weren't able to come because they have very busy schedules. So the board can turn around and probably see the students in here, but here is Jerry and Yuri.
Am I not in the way?
There you go.
Hi, my name is Jerry Connolly.
Hi, my name is Yuri Lee. We are honored to be here virtually tonight at the board meeting.
The reason we're here tonight is because we were selected for National Merit Scholarship Commended Students, and sadly, we couldn't come here tonight due to previous obligations, but we're here in this video.
We would like to thank Dr. Goodman, staff, administration, all of our teachers and Tuckahoe who made this talkable for us.
Thank you.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Jerry Connolly.
Hi, my name is Yuri Lee.
Yeah, it's very big. That's great. That was nice.
Congratulations.
Proud of technology.
Put that together for us.
Yeah, it's great.
Yep, on their own.
That's awesome.
Okay.
All right. Okay, we can move on. All right, that's great. So now this brings us to the first recognition of the audience for agenda items only. Anyone? And if not, stand alone. Turn it over to you.
There we go. It's on. Good evening. Board, Dr. Goodman.
I am Peggy Angelo. I'm the PTA president. We just wanted to give you a quick update on some of the PTA happenings and to echo Pete, your comments on the Tuckahoe happenings. It's fabulous. We appreciate it. You've been plugging the PTA events for us. Dr. Keough, clearly a talented man. He puts together this calendar for us, which we're so incredibly appreciative of. So I think it's fabulous. I read it every single Friday. It's a great resource. So I'm just going to talk about some of our events in November and a few that we have coming up in December. None of these events would be even possible without the amazing executive board, which, you know, I always plug their 62 volunteers in this district, and the way they are able to engage community volunteers, working with the Tuckahoe teachers, staff, and administrators. So our dance program is up and running. We have 180 dancers, which is our pre-COVID number, which is awesome. I think somebody said we have two or three classes of boys as well, which is the largest group, which I love to see that. We've had our book fair at Cottle. We've had sixth, seventh, I'm sorry, sixth grade is coming up this Friday, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade fun nights, which have been a lot of fun. We've also had the middle school principal coffee last week. We had Cottle had its coffee with Mr. Marash, and this week we are having our high school one. They're great discussions. I appreciate Mr. Marash and Dr. Lenahan giving of their time and being so incredibly thoughtful in the things that they cover and that take questions from the parents, which is always a potential issue, but it goes so well, and they're so gracious. So we do really appreciate that. So that's probably one of the better programs we've put on because I do think it's so engaging from administrative level. And I do think we're trying to strike a really great balance of academic programs and fun, and I think when we can marry those two, that's the ideal combination. November 29th is our general board meeting, which is open to everybody in the community. I encourage people to attend that. This year, we're going to have a speaker who's going to be talking about financing for college. And for those of you who have seniors, it can't start when you fill out the FASAF form, how you're going to pay for college. It's got to start way before that. So it's going to be a program about $529 in savings, so we're hoping that we can have a good turnout there. And then in December, we have our Lola Shopping Event, which is down in Crestwood. We get a percentage of all the sales given back to the PTA. It's a fun night. And we will also be having our Holiday Boutique, which many students love to shop at. That will be the beginning of December down at Cottle. And we will also have down at Cottle, a big tradition is the fifth graders will be selling poinsettias and reeds. So they will be looking to obviously engage the community members as well there. And then we also have this Wednesday, and this started out as a virtual and has turned into a great event, is the principal PJ read aloud, where Mr. Marash and Mr. Kay read books, which is fabulous program. And I would also like to take a moment to thank Dr. Lenahan for his constant support to the PTA, to parents. He's always been so incredibly kind and thoughtful when he's worked with us. So I wish him a lot of luck on behalf of myself and the PTA. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, great. Moving right along, we have our consent agenda. So I need a motion to approve consent agenda items two through seven. Laura, second, Lori. Any discussion or questions about anything on the consent agenda? All in favor? That brings us to business of the board. First up is accept a donation. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been offered a donation from the Tuckahoe Middle School High School Sunshine Club, and whereas the district would like to accept such donations, is hereby resolved that the district shall accept a donation from the Tuckahoe Middle School High School Sunshine Club in the amount of $100 towards the superintendent's fund in memory of Dr. Goodman's mother. The funds will be allocated to increase the revenue budget code CM738TE36. Do you have a motion? Laura, second. Cynthia, any discussion? That's very nice then. I'm not sure, obviously, most people now probably know that Dr. Goodman recently lost her mother, which is very difficult, so it's a very nice gesture, so we appreciate that. All in favor? Next, accept another donation. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the superintendent's fund, and whereas the district would like to accept such a donation, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept a donation from Ira and Hillary Stein in the amount of $100 towards the superintendent's fund in memory of Dr. Goodman's mother. The funds will be allocated to increase the revenue budget code CM738TE36. Do you have a motion? Lori, second. Cynthia?
I'd like to thank both the teachers and also the Stein family and Mr. Lee, on behalf of my mother. She cared a lot about education.
All in favor? Well, we got another one coming, by the way. He should have waited. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the superintendent's fund, and whereas the district would like to accept such a donation, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the donation from Amy Goodman in the amount of $1,000 toward the superintendent's fund in memory of her mother, Ellen Stein. The funds will be allocated to increase the revenue budget code CM738TE36. Oh, okay. Very nice. Very nice of you. A motion? Lori, second. Cynthia? That's a really great way to honor your mother. It's a really nice idea. That's awesome. All in favor? Great. And one more donation. Resolved that the Board of Education, Tuckahoe Union Free School District, hereby accept a donation of eight Chromebook carts from the Marinex Central School District. Do we have a motion? Lori, second. Laura, any discussion on this? So apparently, the Marinex School District tried to auction these, and they weren't able to get them out for an auction and offered them to us, and we could use them. So we're taking them. They're worth about $700 each. That's great. So we appreciate the Marinex School District for doing that. All in favor? Great. Next is approve a side letter agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, hereby approves the side letter agreement dated October 19, 2022, by and between the district and the TTA, as attached to the official minutes of this meeting, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Do you have a motion? Lori, second. Laura, any discussion? This is related to tutoring.
So as Kathy said, this is related to the TLC, the Tuckahoe Learning Center, to give the students extra tutoring with a tutoring rate that's a little bit higher than our regular tutoring rate. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, people have to go down to the Tuckahoe Library to do it. It's not on site. So we wanted to make sure that we came to a conclusion with our union of a rate to pay teachers to do that. And I think it's a wonderful thing that we have.
Absolutely. Very good. Well worth the money. Okay, all in favor? Next, award a bid. Resolved, sorry, the Board of Education accepts the lowest responsible bid for snow removal services to the 2022-2023 school year from JMA Landscaping Incorporated, Eastchester, New York. Do you have a motion? Cynthia, second. Lori, any discussion on this? All in favor? Okay. Approve a plan amendment. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District maintains the Tuckahoe Union Free School District 403B Retirement Plan, and whereas the plan was duly adopted on the first day of January 2009 by the district's Board of Education, and whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District Board of Education desires to restate and amend the plan as regards to section 5.4 hardship withdrawals, now therefore be resolved that section 5.4 of the plan is hereby reinstated and amended and attached to the agenda. And official minutes of this meeting are on file in the district office. Do we have a motion? Cynthia?
Second.
Laura, any discussion on this? All in favor? Next, approve a tax refund. Whereas the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, is in receipt of a written report issued by the Executive Director of the Westchester County Tax Commission recommending approval of an application filed pursuant to real property tax law section 556 by the owners of real estate property located at 16 Crawford Street, Bronxville, New York, 10708, and seeking a refund of school taxes paid for the 2022-2023 school year, and whereas pursuant to section 556 of the real estate, the real property tax law, the board as the tax levying body has examined the application and report to determine whether the claim clerical error and essential fact and/or unlawful entry exists, and upon such examination, the board determines that the claimed clerical error and assessment fact and/or unlawful entry does exist, and that the applicant is entitled to the requested refund of taxes. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the application is hereby approved, and it is further resolved that a notation be made on the application and a copy thereof that the application is approved, and the amount of the refund to be paid is $20,332.76. That a copy of the approved application be mailed to the applicant, and that a copy of the approved application be filed with the record of the district. Do you have a motion? Lori, second. Laura, any discussion on this?
Is this the refund that Faith was talking about last?
Yes.
This is the one with the town that served made a mistake, and a percentage has to be taken out from each town. This passed in multiple towns and took out the wrong percentage for our, for Eastchester, which was our taxes. And so it was a mistake that was made at the town level, but we had to rectify it at the school level because we take school debt.
Right, right. So yes, they also got refunds from town of Eastchester to the village of Bronxville as well. Yeah. Okay. Oh, all in favor? I thought we did that already. Nope, okay. All in favor? All right. I lost my place. Where am I? Number nine? Okay, here we go. Oh, yeah, approve Board Director for NYSSBA. Resolved that the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, hereby casts their vote in favor of Cheryl Brady to serve on the New York State School Board Associate Board of Director Area 10 for a two-year term effective January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2024. It authorizes the district clerk to submit the NYSSBA ballot. Do you have a motion? Lori, second. Cynthia? Laura? Okay. Any discussion on this? This was something that we reviewed both candidates' bios and resumes and made a decision based on that in terms of who we will get a vote for. All in favor? All right. Next, approve an athletic merger. Resolved upon recommendation, the Assistant Principal of Student Services and Athletics and the Superintendent of Schools. The Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the sports merger with the Eastchester Union Free School District for varsity wrestling for the 2022-2023 school year. It authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to execute the letter of intent. Do you have a motion? Laura, second. Lori, any discussion on this? Yeah, this is great. This is new, right? Yeah, that's awesome.
I'm happy that we are joining with them so that we can, because we have students who are interested in wrestling, and we don't have a team, so this makes it possible for them to join. So my only hope is now that we have this partnership with Eastchester that Tuckahoe people, families, and all will go and support those games.
That's great. Wrestling is a great sport. And I know it's a sport that's actually increasing in demand amongst colleges, so it's good to have that option for our kids to do that.
Really, this is great. Thank you to Eastchester for...
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you to Eastchester for cooperating with us and letting us be part of that. Great. All in favor? All right. Approve an agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, hereby approves the agreement by and between the district and Manhattanville College dated October 31, 2022, for the provision of student teachers for the provision of student teachers for the period of January 1, 2023, through June 30, 2023. Do you have a motion? Lori, second. Cynthia, can you explain this a little bit, what this is about?
Yeah, so sometimes teachers need a place to do student teaching. We always interview the teacher first. This was actually, they were looking for PE teachers who did not get a placement, and we interviewed these teachers. We think that they would be a good addition. And we have some student teachers already in the district. And it's great for a district too, because we get to train a new teacher. Of course, we get to have an extra teacher help them out. This happens to be PE teachers. Usually, they are the academic teachers. But it's good for us and it's good for them. Got the partnership with the colleges.
All right. Great. So that concludes our business of the board. Oh, actually, wait, we didn't vote. All in favor? There you go. Very good. Thank you very much. All right, so that concludes our business of the board. Now we have personal recommendations.
Yeah, the tenure is...
Right, but it's not part of the A through L, right? It's actually separate? So we'll do that after the, okay. All right, very good. Okay, personal recommendations. Resolved that the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, approves personnel action items A through L as outlined below. Do you have a motion? Laura, second. Cynthia? Dr. Goodman mentioned it before, but amongst these items here is the resignation, to accept the resignation of Dr. Lenahan. So once again, want to thank him for his service and congratulate him on a great career. We wish him well. Well, we'll be doing more of that as the year goes on, but that is in this agenda here. So I wanted to bring that out. All in favor? Great. Okay, and next is to confer tenure. So we have two, oh, just one, right? Just one. Yes, okay. Resolved that the Board of Education, at the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, confer tenure upon Elizabeth Carroll as a teacher of special education in the special education tenure area at the Tuckahoe High School effective December 3, 2022. Do you have a motion? Cynthia, second. Lori? Any discussion on that? Just to congratulate her?
Yes, and the board does, she's a great teacher. The board does review these. They reviewed it last year, but this tenure was coming up at the beginning of the year. In May, as you know, we will be talking about every single teacher that gets tenure, so they will come to a tenure night here. But the board does, the principals come in and talks to the board so that the board really does know what the teacher is doing.
Yeah, tenure obviously is a very, very, very big deal. We consider it to be a very big deal, so this is pretty great. So that's great. All in favor? All right, congratulations to Ms. Carroll. And amend the contract. Be resolved that the Board of Education, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, hereby approves the addendum to the superintendent's contract dated November 14, 2022, retroactive to July 1, 2022, authorizing the board president to execute the addendum and authorize payment thereunder. Do you have a motion? Lori, second. Cynthia? Any discussion on this? This is something we've already talked about. All in favor? All right, great. Okay, and that brings us to our second recognition of the audience for any items at all. Nope. Okay, that's it. We can adjourn. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Have a good night, everybody.
Laura, second. Lori, all in favor? Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.